Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Melissa, will you call roll, please? Mary McCauley, Lisa Deacon, Scott Gingold.
Present.
Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
Violetta Cullen.
Present.
Myrna Iravalo.
Here.
Kirill Miranchev.
Here.
And with five members present tonight, we do have a quorum. Also present tonight is zoning administrator Melissa Klotz. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from the staff on the documents on file, and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath, and although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There's one item on the agenda tonight, which is 140 Chicago Avenue, and you are here. So first, we will go to approval of the meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Comments?
No.
Nice.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of February 19, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I will note that those not voting were not here at that meeting. All right, before we get to the next item, which is 140 Chicago Avenue, can I have everyone who is here tonight, who is going to give us testimony, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Melissa, will you please read the case into the record? Eric Erickson, architect, applies for a special use permit for an automobile service station, mobile, and a special use permit for a convenience store at 140 Chicago Avenue in the C-1 Commercial District, zoning code section 61023, and applies for major zoning relief to reduce the required driveway aisle width adjacent for 90-degree parking stalls from 24 feet to 21 feet, zoning code section 61627, table 16A. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include: special use applications submitted February 21, 2019; variation applications submitted February 21, 2019; zoning analysis, plot of survey, site plans and elevations, landscape plan, truck turning diagram, zoning map of property, aerial view of property, image of property, and DAPR draft meeting minutes of March 6, 2019. Thank you. If you'd please come up and present your case for us, and if you start by giving us your name and business address, please.
Sure. Eric Erickson. Erickson Architecture is my firm. I reside at 3816 Luzette Lane, Glenville, Illinois. I am an old Evanston resident, for what it's worth. Went to all the schools here. Good to be back. If we could move forward to the main site plan. What we have here is it's a gas station down on the south edge of the Evanston on 140 Chicago Avenue, just a little bit north of Howard. It's an existing station. It's been functioning for about 50 years now. The particular characteristics of it is that it has six fuel pumps, and it's got a very small building to it. It's about 450 square feet. The site is sort of long and narrow. In actuality, it works very nicely, has a gas station, has had and been functioning for these decades with no problems. The ownership basically would, at this time, let me back up. It's an older station. It'd be very nice if we could redo the whole thing. We would like to upgrade it, take down the building, take down the canopy and the pumps, and redo everything new, but still, you know, maintain a gas station. Things have changed in the last 50 years, so what a small 450-square-foot little building might have sufficed, been sufficient in the past. Now, there's certain expectations that the public has, some small mart capacity, the basics that people are just used to getting nowadays at a gas station. So we, in our plan, we would like to put in a 1,500-square-foot mart building that will have the basics that people are expecting. Since it is a narrow site, one of the design challenges was to get the automobile traffic flow and the building and everything to work well, safely, smoothly. We worked quite a long time at it. We went through like 26 site plans. That's okay. All in the goal of getting the best balance that we can from a design point of view for pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, truck traffic, the tankers coming in. Have a, what is still a fairly modest building, and we went from six pumps down to five pumps. One of the main design features is that we, instead of having them in line or perpendicular, say, to Chicago Avenue, we've chosen a, an angle pump approach. Having them at approximately 30-degree angle allows for a much easier, more gentle, smoother transportation flow for the cars, where they come in, they don't have to make a hard turn, they make a gentle turn in, they fuel, they get in, back in the car, and then they make a, sort of a gentle turn out as they exit southward. 75% or so of the traffic actually comes from the north going south, so we've oriented them with that in mind. And we are calling out for a one-way at the south exit, south entrance. There's a north drive and a north, a south drive. The south drive, just to inhibit cars from coming in and going counter-flow, we are putting the one-way there. On the northern exit, we, we want to maintain the two-way drive, and we're there, there we're asking for 21-foot drive instead of the 24, and it's mainly revolving only around the corner of one car at that very northern pump. That's sort of where the 21-foot number came from. The, the nature of car gasoline stations is...
All right, why, can you explain why not have both entrances be one-way, one-way enter, one-way exit?
In dealings with Evanston, with the staff, the preference has been to have our parking at the far north end be 90-degree parking. That means they can pull in and pull out and go either way. 90-degree parking, standard, standard 90-degree parking calls for 24-foot drive. I strongly feel that I want people to be able, when they pull out, they're gonna, in many cases, be pulling out, with their rear heading west, they're gonna be aiming straight to an exit, and I know what's gonna happen. They're gonna want to go straight out that exit. They're not gonna want to drive past five pumps and whatever else, pedestrian traffic to go out the other. Gas station properties are very fluid. There's essentially 100% overlap between car traffic and pedestrian traffic. It's just the nature of car, of gas stations. We're all used to it. It works fine. Cars are going 5, 6 miles an hour. People are walking 2, 2 and 1/2, 3 miles per hour. It's just what everyone's used to. So, that's basically the reason, to respond to your question. We do have to maintain reasonably wide entries, 35 feet for the northern drive, and that is to get the, the big tanker trucks in. I have to be able to get a full-size semi in there fueled, and the trap, the truck diagrams show, that we have provided, show that it works.
So fueling trucks will be permitted to enter the wrong, quote-unquote, "wrong" way?
Well, no, no, no. They'll be entering from the north going south. They'll enter, and the north drive, they'll go between the building and the pumps, they will, the tanks are at the south end, they will position themselves at the south end, and let's see if...
There will be enough room for a fueling truck to go in between the building and the pumps?
The fueling truck makes a swing...
And with canopy clearance?
Pardon?
And with clearance from the canopy?
Canopies are 15 feet clear. All trucks in the entire country clears 15 feet. It's just a federal standard.
Okay.
So there's, there's no problem there. So they come in here, they, they position themselves to fuel at the tank, tanks, they will probably back up 20, 30 feet, and then they'll make their exit, exit out. All very standard. It works.
Mr. Erickson, are you gonna maintain a public sidewalk next to the pumps, still?
What we have is, and that, there was a lot of discussion on that, actually. No, we're not gonna have a sidewalk there. What we have is, this is one of those cases where, now, all gas stations are like this. There is a, basically, 100% overlap between pedestrian traffic and car traffic in a gas station. Everyone pulls up to their spot, whether it's at the north end, south end, they will walk right across, you know, all the pavement to the front door to get in pay or buy things, and we're very comfortable with that, and that's, that, that works just beautifully.
I'm not really talking about the patrons of the gas station, but there's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic that's up and down Chicago Avenue at that point to Howard.
Well, the, the city sidewalk is still maintained.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yes, because, yes, of course.
That's what I'm asking.
The city sidewalk's maintained, and we will have a demarcation, a visual demarcation line that sort of visually separates the sidewalk from our property, to call that out. Good question, yeah. And forgive me if I misunderstood.
Have you done any kind of traffic survey at the site to understand sort of what the needs are in terms of five, six pumps down to five and all that stuff?
No, we just have the experience of, you know, 50 years at the, at the station, and we, we are, we had no plans of doing any particular traffic study, per se, on the site.
So here's my, here my concern is, you're, you're reducing the number of pumps, you are creating a one-way traffic flow, which I think actually is wise, in a way, but then what you're also doing potentially is creating a backup of cars waiting at the north end of the parking lot, waiting for one of the five stalls to open up, and potentially spilling, it doesn't look from the drawing like there's much room for a line of cars waiting without spilling out onto Chicago Avenue.
This is, from that, in regards to that question, this is not, this is really not much different from what they currently have of the pumps all on, all in a line. So we have up until this...
It's different in two significant ways. One way is that there are six pumps and not five, and the second way is that traffic goes two ways to the pumps, so people pull in both directions and essentially parallel-park themselves to the pumps.
In regards to the number, in actuality, there's six pumps, but you could never get more than four cars in front of the six pumps because they were too close together. So, in effect, it was a four-pump station.
Understood.
So, from that point of view, it's...
But in order to be able to pull into the pumps, so with a, with a two, with two ways of traffic, you can wait on either end of the lot if there's a need to wait for an empty pump, and/or you can pull in and still maneuver around. If you have only one way of pulling in on the horizontal way, so moving from the top of the drawing to the bottom to pull in, you essentially have to wait in the, in the, in the northwest corner of the lot for an open, open pump, and there's not room for any more than one car to sit there and wait. And even if one car is there waiting, then it blocks the entrance.
I think technically you could wait in the one-way drive aisle that's next, that's parallel to the sidewalk.
Yes.
So you could pull and queue for that very first pump, right? So there could be stacking for what appears to be like six to eight cars theoretically, if you start at that very first...
But then the cars at the pump can't back out.
No, they don't back out. They pull out.
They pull out.
So they, the pumps...
To all pull out, so it's all in and out.
You, you come in, you come into here, say that one, and then you fuel, and then you exit here...
Yeah.
And get out again. So you could have cars stacked all along here, all the way out. Perhaps I could ask the owners if they have this occurrence where cars are backing up into the street? Would that be permissible?
Sure.
I think just knowing the number of cars that are waiting at a given time is better information, because I think there's a better system for waiting in the lot now than there will be with this design.
I beg to differ, but right now, I can get 10 cars fueling, whereas before I could get eight, and here I can have probably six cars stacking before we exit. By the way, could we, could we go to the, the, let me think here for a moment. The, the truck turn one, perhaps? There is one curious thing that's going on. You see there's like a tapered line coming down here? There is an extra lane essentially right here that is, it's not a lane, it's just broadening of the, of the, it's a, it's a widened portion of the drive of Chicago Avenue. From that moment, from that point on, from the north drive on, it actually diminishes down to zero. So here, it's gone, but at that point, it's about six feet right there, maybe seven, which is essentially an extra lane, which if push came to shove, cars would be already positioning themselves on that stretch of road, and there would be room in the two lanes going south to bypass them, to get around them. And we do have, we do have two lanes going south and one lane going north at that point, so there's two lanes to get by, like a six-foot partial lane to be on. So, good question, but there is a combination for that, if they were to stack up...
The accommodation being people could wait in Chicago Avenue, you're saying?
I don't actually expect people to have, I don't expect the volume to be such. This is not actually like a really big speedway that is known for incredibly low prices and, you know, you get 50 cars to it. So I don't actually expect this to occur on very, very much occasion.
I know the property, and I know, I mean, I stopped there, so I know what the lot is like now.
Yeah.
And...
Good.
Yeah, and so, it's, I know it's not a speedway that's off the highway, but I also know that it gets crowded and difficult to maneuver as-is.
I think my answer then is that there are two lanes heading south, so if, lo and behold, there were extra cars that, like in any business, I suppose any business whatsoever that has an inlet and that, you know, has X amount of parking, if there's X plus three cars, in this case, they are, does not stop traffic on Chicago Avenue. Chicago Avenue still maintains with, since it has two lanes. And I would maintain that it's really not much different from the current traffic flow with the island in the middle, and essentially eight, eight cars that could fuel at any given time. One...
How long have the current owners owned the property?
How long?
Okay.
I know you can pump only...
Nope, you gotta come up. You gotta come up.
Oh, sorry.
If you're gonna speak, you gotta come up, and I need your name and business address, please.
The rules are, please state your name, state your name and your address.
My name is Manzuro San, 5816 Lincoln Avenue, Modern Golden Eyes. Like you said, right now, we maximum six, six car can use the pump right now, not more than six, and really hard to come back and forth, back and forth. And this way gonna be 10 car can use the pump. There are more facility and inconvenient. We are there, and we know how the people, they have to back forth, back and forth, and waiting and doing the hurrah, yeah, really hard. Look like six pump are not working, three pump, they're working right now.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could elaborate on that just a touch, the, the issue currently is that although the cars line up all in a line, if you want to get to the, if there's a car in the front pump and a car at a, at a rear pump, to get to the middle pump, you have to drive in, you basically have to double, parallel park. People aren't very good at parallel parking anymore, so they'll, they'll pull up, they'll back in, they'll pull in at an angle, which means they'll block other traffic. It's problematic. Right now, this is a far superior, more easily flowing, safer design, no-holes barred, than trying to line cars up where you're parallel parking to get into your spot. And the, the danger downside is that someone who's really not skilled will actually back right into a, a pump. It's, it's possible. It doesn't happen often, but that's the last thing we want.
I know that DAPR asked for you to provide us with a photometric plan of your lighting.
I, we absolutely will. We were planning on delivering that with the permit drawings, or, or, actually, I'm told that we will be meeting again with...
DAPR.
Correct, yes, and we, we always do provide a photometric plan, and, and to speak specifically in that, our, our goal is, we, the south property line is most critical. We want to have as close to zero as possible on the south line, since we have new, lovely new residential tower coming into the south. And to the west, there's the tracks, to the east is the, the streetlights, you know, shining on Chicago Avenue. To the north is just the utility building. Not that we're going to, you know, have a lot of light spreading, but we, we always use LED lights that aim down...
Right.
Not horizontal...
Yep.
Down angle, or, or, as nice, Stephen, and LEDs are wonderful, that they can be aimed and targeted beautifully.
Great.
So, just to get at the zoning variation that's requested...
Yes.
Can you explain the need for reducing the width of that aisle to 21 feet?
Yes. The, this was an amazingly careful balancing act of getting all the flow, car flow and truck flow to work. For me to be able to get trucks to safely come in and out, we had to position the, the canopy is essentially where it is. Let me turn this off. Thank you. Forgive me. In conjunction with that, then, is the, the traffic coming in, and the parked cars at the north, we want very much for them to be, we're asking for our variance essentially to have two-way traffic for the sake of the parking. I can maintain 24-foot clear behind the building, and actually, the 21 feet is to the, say, the north, the back corner of a car that might be parked at the north pump. At any given time, it's probably, one-third of the time, there'll probably be a car there, arbitrarily speaking, so normally, we wouldn't even need the 21 feet, but to that, to that car there would be 21 feet, so there we have to, zoning has asked us to request that. And I want to maintain that...
Does the owner's insurance cover vehicular damage on-site that may be caused by the reduced clearance?
I, forgive me, I do not know specifically, but I can certainly ask the ownership here if they have insurance, and can, the question, you'll have to come up here and answer, do you have insurance on the station for cars that hit each other on the site?
Yeah, we do have insurance.
And your, your insurance covers that? It covers accidents between two cars on the property?
Yes. Yes, they, I do have.
Now, the 21 feet that you're asking for, that's where it actually says 22 feet?
Correct, yes. Actually, when you, if you scale my drawing to the bumper, yeah.
Right, to the edge of the bumper...
And that's the reason for the 21, just to, pardon?
To the edge of the bumper would be 21, but...
Yes.
It's stating 22 feet. Can that be corrected?
We are asking for 21 because...
I understand that, but what, what's on your drawings is 22 feet.
Correct.
So if you're asking for 21, it needs to reflect 21 feet.
I can change the drawing, but, could we go back to the main site plan, then? The dimension, the dimension is actually not intended necessarily to be the dimension for the variance, that, the dimension...
It looks to me like it's to the canopy, but...
What am I, yes, there, thank you. That's actually simply to the canopy, nothing else. It's not to the car bumper. I don't measure to a car bumper. It's more of a practical dimension that zoning pointed out, and I agree with them. You know, it's, it's a realistic number. But the 22 feet, I have to maintain, that's to where the canopy is.
How many, how many employees are there of this establishment at any given point?
Employees?
Yeah.
One or two, is my observation.
Okay. And as I understand it, there's parallel parking for them in the back?
Yeah.
Off to the...
It's, yeah, to the, correct. Right there, yeah.
And how about delivery trucks? How often are they coming?
Uh...
The same frequency that they are now?
Delivery trucks...
Every other day.
You'll have to state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Kaiton. I run the gas station 140 Chicago Avenue, and the delivery comes every other, every other day.
Okay. Are you anticipating more deliveries now that you are a bigger store, or do you think you're just getting more stuff on that same delivery cycle?
No, there's just, we got more tanks now, the 1,500 gallons, so now, every, same thing is like...
Not just gas, but delivery of soda and chips and all that, all, everything you're selling.
It's the same thing. Same thing like usual, you know, before.
So you get delivery of gas twice a week?
Every other week.
Sorry, every other day.
Every other day.
So you get a delivery of gas every other day, and how about delivery of things you sell inside the mart?
Every week, all the...
You get one delivery a week?
Week.
Okay. And what size is that truck?
Trucks, probably, I can't even... Same like those gas trucks.
Uh, no, that would be a semi, the gas...
The one with the seven, I'm talking about. So all different sizes, you know, they comes like small, big, you know?
Okay. But the intention is not for them to park on Chicago Avenue, but to actually have essentially a loading area that's parallel to the employee parking spot? Is that correct?
Yeah, you could park by the, where is your tanks?
Yes.
There's your tank space right there?
Okay.
And we let them know, like, you know, you could park there.
And for hours of operation, you're expecting to stay the same 24 hours?
That's correct.
Okay.
If I may...
Yep.
If I may comment, the, the delivery trucks would, would come in, and they would angle in here and park in that neck of the woods right there, and then they, all they have to do is cart their, you know, with, cart their, their product in.
Right.
Actually, it's, it's, the, there's not necessarily a lot more trucks coming in at, they're stealing the same stuff, it's just that they'll have a little more room for more of it, so, but they still have to deliver all the same, you know, various, different types of drinks or, or, you know, non-food products, so just a little bit bigger supply of it, which is...
I have a question.
Yes.
Have you considered a different location for the vacuum and the air?
Well, we want to keep the vac actually really far away from the residential tower. They make not massive noise, but a little bit, so I'd rather keep it at the north end, not the south end. It's usually, it's, it's kind of customary to have it on the edge of a row of parking, so anyone who wants to use it, that's their spot to pull into. So I, I don't want to put it to the south, that'd be the only other location to put it, and I really don't want to put it there.
Just because of the noise?
Oh, well, yeah.
I mean, it's across the street from the train tracks.
Well, I'm just trying to be a considerate neighbor of the, the new residents, five stories of residents coming into the south. I mean, it's not like, I, it's not I would fight tooth and nail necessarily if you wanted it on the south, but it's, it's also visible enough so people pull in and they, they'll see it, and they say, oh, there's, there's a vac, I can go get that, or air.
I ask the question because if something, if somebody is using the air and somebody wants to wait for that, he or she will block certain cars from using the gas station or using the exit. So it is, it's a bottleneck if you have waiting over there.
Or they'll pull into a parking spot.
I imagine if someone's gonna wait, they're gonna probably pull, pull forward right to there in front of the waste area, and fill that...
How will then the... I would imagine, but...
How will the one using the air get out?
Whoever's there will probably back up and let them out, but let me ask, again, forgive me.
I'm, I'm just suggesting it's almost not a zoning issue, but I'm trying to improve.
No, but actually, if you move the, the vax to the other side of the parking lot, then you can move the parking spaces further to the east and create less of an issue from the 22-foot clearance.
I was thinking about this, too. But anyway, this is just a design solution. You may rethink it if...
I only have six spots in the whole place, and the four most useful ones are here, and I really don't want to diminish that. I mean, that's, it's, these are a little bit further away, one of them, we put an employee car, so I basically have five car spots. I don't want to, I don't really want to diminish that. Everyone counts when you have that few.
It's not, but it's just moving the same, the vacuums to another spot, and moving the, the spots you have, you know, however, whatever that distance is to the east, kind of a tiny bit.
So, I mean, one, we have, one could put, well, I really would, I would like trucks to be able to pull in here and stay, so I didn't want to pull this over... able to pull in here and stay. So I didn't want to pull this over four feet, I suppose that's a possibility. Can I ask the owners if they get a line waiting?
Gentlemen, can, how often does it happen that someone's using the vacuum and then someone is waiting to use the vacuum? Does that happen sometimes?
10 minutes, you know, they take 10.
They take 10 minutes? Does it happen often where someone is waiting for someone else to finish?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm not the expert on the topic, but I, in my experience, they don't actually get used quite all that often. I don't often see them used in just my day-to-day, but I'm only speaking as a, you know, as a day-to-day driver. I don't often see them used for that matter.
In order to resolve that particular issue for the board, are you guys amenable to the idea of letting staff and DAPR deal with that and resolve that as they see fit? And in that coming, in that final DAPR review?
Yes. I'm more than happy to
Just because I want to just move on from this.
I'm more than happy to interact with DAPR and talk and, because they're very good at working together to
Given 26 site plans, we know you're willing to work with us. So we appreciate that. And so just to keep things moving into
Very good. It's a balancing act, though.
Except for, I think, moving, so putting the weight and bottleneck issue aside, I'm amenable to moving the vacuums because I think it makes the zoning relief that's been requested less of a burden if those parking spots are moved further to the east where the vacuums are located. So it's not like, hey, let's push it on someone else. I think to me, that's a condition that makes it more palatable to grant the relief.
Okay. Noted. Are there any other questions?
It's only a statement of it. Every time you move one thing, it has to be balanced against other factors. It's a complex, it's not a simple move. It's a balancing act of
It's a slide puzzle. It's very complicated. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about the project?
No, but we look forward to getting a nice, a new, a nice new gas station and with your help.
Are there any other questions from the board? Nope. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Is there anybody here who'd like to make a comment? Please come up and state your name and address, please.
Matt Rogers. I live at 133 Clyde Avenue, which is literally across the Metro tracks. So my building does sort of back up to them with a Metro train in between us. This is something that is very, very welcome in the neighborhood. As we develop Howard Street, and sort of this is the next moving up of Howard Street, the building is an older building. It doesn't look as nice, no offense. But, so having something that is more of a welcoming into Evanston on that south end, once we get the City Grange building in, this will be the next building to the north of it. It will create a more welcoming atmosphere. In my knowledge, there have been no problems at this particular station. And we, although I'm not here to speak for the entire neighborhood, we have had a couple of neighborhood meetings where this project has been discussed, and there has been no opposition raised to it. And I think the fact that nobody is out here to speak against it also kind of speaks to that. The one thing that Mr. Gingold said that I wanted to kind of emphasize is the north part, I would make sure that is a two-way, and I would not make it a one-way all the way through because you're going to have people who want to go north. And if you go south, there's no easy way to get back onto Chicago Avenue because of the Metro tracks and it's cut off at certain streets. So you have to go almost up to, Oakton would be the next nearest point that you could turn to get back onto Chicago Avenue. So what that would do is create more traffic coming through residential neighborhoods. So that's why I would be very encouraging of having at least a way to turn north onto Chicago there. One of the other things that's kind of been raised is the traffic flow coming down. With City Grange coming in, and Melissa, you can kind of correct me if I'm wrong on anything here, but the plan is to put parking along Chicago Avenue at that very south end still, last I heard. So the lanes will actually start to narrow down anyway. So if it moves a little further north, the lanes narrow down, all the better because that will help slow traffic, get it into queue for the light there at Howard and Chicago Avenue. But I 100% support the project. I think it's very welcoming to bring a fresh new face to that side. Unfortunately, there's nothing that can be done on the opposite side, which is the CTA yard. But the fact that we can make our side as attractive and welcoming and nice and convenient for people as possible, I think is a very positive thing.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Seeing none. Do you guys want to, you have the opportunity to make a closing statement if you would like. You don't have to. It's totally up to you.
I feel we've had a good interaction.
Great. Okay. With that, we will close the record. And deliberations. Thoughts from people?
I agree with the comments of the neighbor, Mr. Rogers, about his neighborhood. And I think it's, it is a good project. I actually like the creative use of diagonally oriented pumps and using a traffic flow solution. I am concerned a little bit about the reduction in width and the backup of traffic, but it sounds like from Mr. Rogers' comments, there's not as much of a concern about traffic to the extent that there's going to be parking on Chicago Avenue alongside that lot potentially anyway. And I do believe it can be slightly alleviated if the five parking spots can be relocated further east where the vacuums are currently shown on the drawing. So I'm in favor of the project with conditions.
Thank you. You can't. Just don't even, don't even start. Don't even.
Sorry. Thank you.
Killing me, man. Killing me. Nope. Record's closed. Can't have, can't have any more comments from anybody, including you.
This is one of my favorite businesses. I go here all the time, me and my mom. I know these guys, and I support the project. I'm looking forward to a new station there.
Thank you.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Same here.
I actually happen to think that it's a fairly elegant solution to a painful problem that I experience routinely at various gas stations. And I think that you actually do have plenty of stack space for vehicles on that east side, in that drive aisle over there on that east side. So I am, I'm in favor of your project as well without the conditions of moving the vacuum and the air. I think that's going to cause a bit of grief. I'm willing to, I wouldn't mind having them chat over with DAPR about it and see if there's something there from a staff level that they're seeing as a solution, a potential solution. But I'm not sure I want to condition it that they absolutely positively have to move that vacuum and air condition and air. So with that
What about a condition that requires them to continue to maintain insurance that covers damage caused by the reduced way?
That's fine, but isn't that really just their, it's up to them and the way that they choose to run their business?
Well, it is, but they said they have it now.
Okay.
And the issue caused by the reduced way is potential collision. That's why the 24-foot requirement exists, because that's how much room is needed to maneuver there. So reducing the way, if you have a car parked at that back pump and a car pulling out of the easternmost parking space, you have a smaller area, and that's the concern there. They said they maintain that insurance now. And I'm saying as a condition to getting zoning relief that increases the risk of accident that they require to maintain that insurance.
I guess I'm uncomfortable going that far because we've never done that before and gone so far as to require somebody to have a certain amount of insurance or a certain type of insurance. So I guess I'm disinclined to go that far and take what we have done further than we ever have before. Because I'm disinclined. So, anybody else have thoughts on that? Want to weigh in?
Yeah, I agree with you, Mary Beth.
That's a first.
I know. If they have insurance, it's, they should still have insurance to be a business, and whatever is under their coverage is under their coverage now or later. There's no difference on the insurance.
There is, because there's not a difference on the insurance. There's a difference on the use of the property.
There's no difference on insurance. You have a certain amount that is your highest premium, and you maintain, you can have many, many accidents in there, and your insurance is the one that's going to say, I'm going to drop you or not. So that's up to, they still have to pay for their insurance, their business insurance, and that will cover it.
If they have the insurance. If they don't buy the insurance, then they don't have the insurance.
But it's a business insurance. Whatever's under their business is for everything covered in insurance.
No, that's not how insurance works. You negotiate the scope of your coverage.
I would love to table the discussion of insurance only because it's well outside our purview and well outside my scope of competence, quite frankly. So
Does the staff, does the 21-foot reduction make staff uncomfortable at all?
Because you guys, because you guys were in favor of it.
It was reviewed at DAPR and I believe unanimously recommended for approval. Therefore, we really do not have concerns with it. Drive aisle variations have been granted in the past. And I think specifically at a gas station site, there are always vehicles going in multiple directions even when they're not supposed to be. And it's just something that the user needs to be more aware in general.
Okay.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments from anyone? All right. So there are seven standards for a major variation. So the first is that the request of variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. This is an existing gas station, and it's going to be a gas station. So there's no change in the use there, and so there should be no change to anybody in the immediate area. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number two, the request of variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. One of the intents of the zoning ordinance is to let business owners update and expand their business as they see fit to reap some economic rewards. So I believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This is a very skinny site, a long and skinny site, and it is a true challenge to be able to get traffic circulation to work on this site. And I think that given their particular, they're working through 26 site plans with staff is evidence of the hardship of that peculiar site. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Frankly, the parking spaces are not required by zoning, and so they are providing these four parking spaces at the request of staff. And so given that they're not required at all, it's a difficulty to have them meet the full standard of the, of the drive aisle width when they're squeezing so much into a limited site anyway. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Clearly, we hope they extract additional income because we want your tax dollars. So next, we look at the public benefit. And there is a clear public benefit here. It is a much nicer looking building. It certainly will help revitalize, help in the continued revitalization of that neighborhood and that part of town. And so I do believe that there is a significant public benefit here. So that standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. These owners only bought this particular lot and station six years ago. So this station has been there for longer than that, so that definitely predates them. So that standard has been met. And number seven, the request of variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals. We're going to go back again to the 26 site plans. I am rigorous on this deviation from the minimum deviation. And when somebody comes up with 26 variations to try and satisfy staff, there is definitely a willingness to work with staff and an intent to try to meet the regulations. So I appreciate that, and I do believe that that standard has been met.
I don't, I disagree on standard seven, but I think that it can be ameliorated by some of the suggestions that the rest of the board believes should be discussed in a back and forth with DAPR and staff.
Thank you. We will now go on to the nine standards for a special use. And number one, it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. It is. Number two, it's in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. Two of the goals of the comprehensive general plan are to promote growth and redevelopment and to strengthen our economic base. And providing a larger store does both. It's growth of that particular business as well as strengthening our economic base. So those standards have been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with all the cumulative effect, with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood. There are not, there is not a proliferation of gas stations and convenience stores in the neighborhood. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. In fact, given that it is a much nicer looking building, it certainly will increase the value of properties in the neighborhood by being redeveloped with nicer landscaping as well. It's not just the building, it's the landscaping that's key. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. It's on a busy thoroughfare, so it is easily accessed by everything. So that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. It's a gas station. Now, it will be a gas station. It's going to get the same amount of traffic in and out of it. So I don't believe that there will be any undue traffic congestion. So that standard has been met.
I have concerns about that standard, which have been discussed on the record, but I believe if, I believe that if the plan is to add a row of parking on Chicago Avenue that they may not, that that concern may not be an issue.
Thank you. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources, which does not apply. It preserves significant, so that standard's been met. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features, which does not apply as well. And number nine, it complies with all of the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, which you will. So that standard has certainly been met. So we are going to make a motion. Will someone make a motion for
I'd like to make a motion first on the special use.
Okay.
We have to do it in two motions, right?
I don't think so, because I think city council's voting on everything. Because it's linked to parking, it's one and done.
You can do it either way.
Okay. However, y'all would like.
I'll just do them both at once. So I move with respect to 19ZMJV-0014, that we recommend to city council that the special use be granted and that the major zoning relief be approved, subject to the following conditions. These nine conditions come out of DAPR's recommended conditions. One, that the applicant provide visual demarcation separating the public sidewalk and driveway aisle. Two, that they add signage arrows on the pavement and directional signage indicating traffic flow. Three, that they reduce the south curb cut width. Four, that they remove the word sidewalk, quote sidewalk, near the building. Five, that they change the parkway mulch to grass on the landscape plan. Six, that they add a bike rack. Seven, that they clearly mark the ADA fuel pump with a notification button. Eight, that they provide a color rendering of the building. And nine, that they provide a photometric plan. I also would add the conditions that the hours of operation be 24 hours, seven days a week. And that the applicant discuss with DAPR and staff potential changes to the north side of the lot that might reduce the impact of a smaller aisle.
Second.
Hang on.
Sorry. And that the, what's that?
Employee parking.
Employee parking.
Our standard comments, which is that they have to park on-site or
Yes.
in city garages.
Yes, and that the employees, uh, that employees who utilize parking need to do so, uh, in the employee parking spot on-site or in, um, garage spaces and not in the spaces that will be added on Chicago Avenue, uh, or around the corner.
Second.
Yes.
Yes, and that delivery trucks, uh, that delivery trucks not be permitted to park on Chicago Avenue while making deliveries. Uh, and lastly, that, um, the property and project be developed otherwise in accordance with the testimony and documents that have been submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And with that, you go to a city council with a recommendation for approval. Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are we discussing, does anybody have anything to discuss?
Yes.
Oh. It's not even on here.
Sorry.
What you got for us?
Mary Beth's term on the ZBA will be up at the end of April. We will need a new chair. I had sent Violetta an email asking. I'd no see that. When this came up a year or so ago, no one was interested. We don't want to force anyone. We do need a leader. Anyone?
I don't, I, I don't think I should do it because I'm, I'm going off of the board in November.
Right.
So someone else should just do it and assume the position.
Would that we could, Matt. Would that we could. So just think about it.
Think about it. We, we need to come up with some sort of a solution in the next couple of weeks so that we have enough time for the mayor to, um, appoint someone, but, um...
Appoint someone to be the chair?
Yes.
And who's going to be, is the mayor appointing someone to replace Mary Beth? Is that already underway?
Um, that is under review, but honestly, it's really hard to get, um, someone onto the zoning board. If anyone out in the public is watching and would like to join the zoning board, please apply through the mayor's office.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll keep, if any of you have interest in it or questions or anything about being chair, uh, let me know. Talk to Mary Beth, but we do need to have someone step forward. And it doesn't mean that you have to do it for years and years.
It's true.
If, if someone maybe wants to do it for six months and then we switch to someone else, that's always a possibility. So just think things over, please. That's all. Oh, wait. One more thing.
Oh.
Our, our next zoning board hearing is a special meeting for, scheduled for April 10th. That is a Wednesday. It's going to be a little bit different than usual. First, what is happening is at 7 o'clock, the Plan Commission will convene for a meeting of their own that will take probably just a few minutes. Um, ZBA members are welcome to be up at the dais and, and quiet during that, or you can be out elsewhere. And as soon as they wrap, the zoning board will convene for a regular ZBA-only meeting for one case that I am anticipating will be quick. I don't know for sure. And as soon as that wraps, then these ZBA and Plan Commission together will convene for a joint meeting, um, to hear the case that, that you guys previously heard for Nick's Organic for a Type 2 restaurant in conjunction with some additional requests that they are now making, including a map amendment, which is why we have a joint meeting. So we will have three meetings in a row, all in the same room that night. However, in return, you will not have a meeting on April 16th, the regular scheduled night.
Oh, so the April 10th is my last meeting?
Correct.
Nice. Okay.
Okay, that's all.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.